Housemaid.
Give me the sen- senior version of the elements. Pretty soon. When the Al- when elements can't be like. It's very interesting. I mean, I haven't, I've only read the. Yeah.
Where'd you sit?
In a.
Probably isn't. Can't do that, you can.
Nope, I skipped all together. The bottom school told me that they were having many conversations that seemed interminable and it was not worth showing up.
Oh, I think Jill said if you sit over, you cannot sit right there, you can reach the alcohol now.
Yeah, but I can't take pictures of the podium.
Yeah.
Okay, I can actually, the outlet here, wanna make sure that there's an aisle for people to.
Okay. Are you ready? I will now call to order the town of Elmont Town Council regular meeting on October eleventh, twenty twenty-two. We will start by all standing for those who are able to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, I'm. United States of America. To the Republic, which is stand, we're on nature, underground, invisible, liberty, and best of all.
Hey, so on our consent agenda, Diane, can you please read those items?
Yes. There are a town council meeting minute. March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two, the work session meeting minutes, April twelfth, twenty twenty-two, special meeting minutes, April twelfth, twenty twenty-two, the record. April twenty fifth, twenty twenty-two, work session meeting minutes, May tenth, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting minutes. I'm playing catch-up from my eye surgery, so please forgive me and bear with me. There'll be certification of sufficiency of annexation petition.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Well, now open up the public comment section. In this portion, the public may speak on any non-agenda item for up to three minutes. And agenda item will only be discussed at its appropriate time. And public hearing items can only be discussed during the public hearing. If you would like to give a public comment and you haven't signed in, please be sure you do so before leaving. And please state your name and address for the minutes. Are there any residents, visitors, family alike who would like to share any public comments? Are there any online? Okay, we will close the public comment section. All right, moving on to our presentations, we have two this evening, so we will start with Robin Win- Winham. You'll have to correct me on that, Robin, from the United Way. So, Robin, if you'd like to come to the podium, the floor is yours.
Good evening. For the opportunity to be here. I appreciate your bravery attempting my last name. Most people just call me Robin. That's. I am Robin Winteringham. I have the privilege of serving with the United Way as their housing specialist. The reason for my being here this. On Wednesday, the nineteenth. We will, from eight-thirty to two-thirty, we will have a housing forum at Ebenezer U C D on Apple Street. The forum is designed to get opinions from our community, concerns from our community, anything about housing. Get it talked about in the community. Not gonna be your typical of the, where you have the, you know, speaker and everybody wears a suit. Very casual, open space. Every person will have the opportunity to be heard. In addition, the agenda isn't even written. In the first hour of the meeting is what we'll write the agenda. As we identify things that are important about housing to our community. Now, some of you may think, well, why a housing forum? Why is that necessary? Well, as many of you know, housing prices here in our community have accelerated relatively rapidly. A good number of houses are also being bought by people from out of state, flipped and priced where families can't afford them. And we feel like we should talk about these things. It's our community after all. So, we'll have a good day. We'll eat and we'll talk. And by the time you leave, we'll hand you the results of everything that we talked about for the day, which would be fun. I do wanna share just a little bit of information with you about why we feel this is so important. I've had the privilege to attend eviction court for three weeks. And the first day I went, I was prepared. I've been to law school, so I knew what was going on. But I wasn't prepared for the conversation I had with the magistrate afterwards. He called me up and said, I'd like to talk to you for Minnesota. He said, you need to know that what I do in here is the law. It's not necessarily what my heart thinks we ought to be doing. And then he confided, confided to me, it's not a secret, and several weeks prior, in one morning session, he had evicted a hundred and nine families. That may not seem like a big number, but Almanas County's not that big. And if you think about it, when you evict a family, you evict mom, dad, kids, grandparents if they're staying there, sister who needs supervision. It's more than just a hundred and nine. I personally have lived in Almanas County for a very long time. I think we can do better. I think we can do more. I hope that you feel that way too. And I hope that some of you will choose to come out to the forum. It's gonna be an interesting event. There's no telling what the outcome's gonna be, because like I said, we're going into it without an agenda, agenda, but we do have a good facilitation group, so that's, and they'll be running it. I'd be happy to answer any questions you would have. Oh, oh, I forgot, we're gonna feed you too, so. Lunch is on us. There is no charge to attend. And really, it's a casual event. If you have a chance to come, you can wear a suit if you want. You can come in jeans if you want. We're hoping, and we've tried to reach the entire community. We have three more presentations and I'll, I'll make the last one at three o'clock for the night. If I may approach, I did bring you all invitations for you to that. In the bottom corner, there's a QR, we asked that you register only because we are gonna feed you. There are QR codes you can scan if you would like. I hope that you will come. But what I really hope is that I'm hearing the voices of citizens from the community. Come up with some viable working solutions to try to house people. We get fifteen, twenty thousand a day. People with no housing. So, there's a need and there's the interest, and I hope y'all will be there.
Reg- regretfully, I cannot attend. I would love to. Just a request, and I also have this request of our own staff as well, is when you want for us to attend events, if you could, three months would be a great, you know, at a minimum, six weeks, because everybody up here works. So, to get out of work for the full day is difficult. We're already asked to get out of work a lot already, you know, months in advance. So, if we can, you know, have, even if it's just a please hold, you know, a save the date, like when, you know, someone's getting married and three months out, you gotta save the date, and then six weeks you get the actual invitation. I think that that could really help.
I feel certain you're right. And we did start reaching out to people trying to get on their agenda just as quickly as we could, and then tried to make sure we weren't found in two places at one night, and that was kind of sorted it that way. But I understand the concern.
Yeah, cuz I would love to attend, but I'm unable to. I'm, I'm actually off that day to speak at an event for another local organization.
For you. Thank you. No, I appreciate that. Any other concerns or questions before I go?
Robin, I just would really like to thank you for the work that you do. I mean, the, the number of one hundred and nine families evicted in one day is just heartbreaking. Unfortunately, I'm gonna be out of town in New York that day, but I won't be up here. And what you said, that there was going to be information put together immediately afterward. Is there a way that we can receive that information?
Be happy to do that, do you?
Okay.
I'm happy to do that for some others who would like to be there as well. Like the whole Paul Reddy Awards and we go on and come to do that. But they wanna know what's going on, so can you read the report? I said, of course, I'd be happy to. Just one little, little other thing yet. From eviction court, and then I'll go. A family came in, my dad, three kids, two with a killing arms, one little boy, you know, walking on, on my sand. My mom sat there and my dad stood over there, and they got evicted. Well, the woman, mother, you could just see despair, and she was sobbing. And her little, her little five-year-old walked up and took her hand, said, it's okay, Mom, we're gonna go home now. And the whole place was like, cuz everybody knew it was only gonna be their house for another couple of days. So, it's a big issue here. We're heavily invested in, in United Way. We'd appreciate your support and your attendance if you can. And duly noted, I totally agree with you. More notice is always better. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Of course.
And you're welcome to stay or you're welcome to leave, whatever you prefer, Robin. Did you have a question, Rick?
Or she's giving out.
Yeah.
We have a couple of those questions.
Step on the food card.
Okay.
Please pass them out.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
We can reuse them, right?
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Robin. Hey, presentation, letter B, presentation of results of ISO certification inspection, and I believe Massey's gonna give that presentation?
I'm not gonna take up too much of your time, but we do have some really good news to present tonight. So, every five years, the State North Carolina Department of Insurance, they come by to every fire department in the state, and they grade them. And that affects homeowners insurance, commercial building insurance, things like that. Prior to this, well, right, as of right now, we are a class three. Starting January first of next year, we are moving to a class two. So, one being the highest, ten being no fire department at all. To put that into perspective, we're grading one again. To put that into perspective, using numbers that were given to us by the Department of Insurance, there are only thirty fire departments in the state that have a better grade than us now. That puts us in the top eight percent in, say, North Carolina, and a top five percent in country. So, what does that mean is, from what I can gather from the Department of Insurance is homeowners insurance may go down from this. Commercial insurance will go down from this. So, that will, you know, in a way, help recruit business to the pound. So, and the reason that is important is because now, being a class two, we are also in one of the others. And there's a class two, and there's a class two. So, we're very proud to be joining this group of, of class two. But to give you just a quick synopsis of what they, what they grade, the greatest on staffing, how many firefighters we have responding total, because, you know, we do have volunteers in our organization, training hours, and what we train on, communications, equipment and apparatus, and the availability, availability of water. So, our biggest, our biggest hit was staffing. That was where we actually took the biggest hit. But to me, that is actually a compliment, because it shows that our staff is doing more with less. Because when you compare us to the other fire departments that are level two, they have a lot more staffing than we have. So, I just wanted to give a quick synopsis. Communications is worth ten percent. We cannot control that at all. That is Almanas County number one. The water supply, which the Tampa, is forty percent of our grade, which we maxed out on. So, we do appreciate the town, town's water system. And how that affects our outside of them is because we do service people outside of the town. It's their class four, so you can see the difference that water makes in grade. And fifty percent is fire department operations. Which, you know, includes the staffing and all the, all the other things that, that I wanna know. But I just wanted to see if any of y'all had any questions. You got all the good news tonight, that we'll move into a class two.
Excellent news.
That's great.
Congratulations. Well, really, you know, everybody in the department, I wish I could have them all up here because, because they certainly deserve things. The inspection did happen under Chief Walker's interim, and I really, really need, you know, to recognize him for, for this, so.
What did we differently, this go around? Like, what did we improve on to get us to a number two?
So, right now, I don't have the numbers from five years ago. But we've already planned a staff meeting to go over it, and me and Mr. Roden are gonna go over it to see exactly what the differences are between the two, and to see where we improved and where we can possibly improve.
Can you put that in the monthly report that we get from your department?
I will, and I didn't do it this time, just because it doesn't take effect until January first, so I didn't wanna confuse people and have them start from their insurance companies too quick. But, but we definitely will in the, in the next newsletter.
Congratulations, congratulations on all the hard work. So, not to put any pressure, but what would you need to get to a one? Is it primarily staffing?
It, it would be staffing, but it wouldn't just be staffing. There are other areas that we would have to improve on. We, you know, we just crested into the two, so we have wanted to make up to get to a one. Class one fire departments, Greensboro, Charlotte, Raleigh, places like that. So, yeah, we're gonna look at it, and I will be glad to report on what it might take.
Another three hundred thousand.
I definitely appreciate that, and, and, you know, we will, I will definitely come and get at a later point and, and talk about what we found, so.
All right, proclamations. And so, quickly, we are celebrating the several, or several items this month. So, October is National Community Planning Month. It is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, Cancer Awareness Month, and October ninth through the fifteenth, which is this week, is also National Fire Prevention Week. So, I don't think we have to take any action on those other than me signing them, correct? All right. So, any questions about any of the proclamation? Okay, moving on to ordinances and resolutions. So, the first one is on letter A, resolution fixing the date for a public hearing on question of annexation. Rich, what do we have going on there?
Actually, if, if, mine on the. Diana, she's put it together. She, I would read it to you. She can tell it to you.
Okay.
So, in the consent agenda, certificate of sufficiency of, of the annexation petition, you all had directed me to verify that petition, and which I did, and it came back that the person issuing the petition is indeed owner of the property. And so, that's valid. Now, the next step is to set a date, if you accept a petition, to set a date for a public hearing. For the petition to have a, an ordinance, to have an ordinance to adopt the, the annexation.
Okay, and the original date was what? Sorry?
So, we started this in September, at the September thirteenth meeting. And what we were gonna do is, and it escaped me, missed the deadline. We were gonna certify the certificate at September twenty-sixth meeting. So, now we're doing it, able to do both here. And at the, if you accept the October twenty-sixth date, which is the first, our first, the work session meeting, you can hold the public hearing at that meeting, and then you'll be able to adopt the ordinance at your regular meeting in November.
So, we would hold the public hearing on Monday, the twenty-fourth. And then we would then, if we decided to, to vote on that in the first meeting of November.
There you go. That's it.
I have a question. Do we not, is that a sufficient amount of time to announce it? I thought there was like a two week, is there a two week?
Yeah, I've already counted down. As, as long as you all approve this part tonight, I'll have it to the newspaper by tomorrow, and they'll be able to publish it by today's, by Friday. So, I've counted the dates and make sure it's not less than ten and not more than twenty-five.
I thought our council meeting was on the twenty-fourth of October. Am I correct, or is it on the thirty-first?
On the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Days, not, not two weeks.
Oh, it's ten days.
Yeah, not less than ten, not more than twenty-five.
I thought it was two weeks. That's why I asked at the beginning.
Two weeks, just in general.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure we were correct. Okay, thank you.
And just the, the property question, it's about an acre size owned by Dorothy Hinshaw, and where is the property at?
It's, it's Alpha Manning.
Corner, near the corner, Manning and University, okay.
Do I have a motion to approve? A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Right, moving on to fiscal year budget amendment number two.
Just back on your agenda, because I was preparing it. I neglected to hit save. And so, I don't think I put attached to with all the answers to your questions was not attached, so. You have amendment number two attached, accomplishes a couple of things. It makes a correction error in the fire department budget that we eliminated the, we inadvertently zeroed out the line for workers' compensation insurance. So, that adds thirty-six thousand, three hundred dollars to the, to the budget, would transfer from our fund balance of the thirty-six thousand, three hundred dollars. The second item is contracted services under the planning department or development services of sixty thousand dollars as an expenditure. And the revenues of that are a forty-eight thousand dollar grant from the N C D O T for multimodal planning grant, which has a twelve thousand dollar local match requirement, cash match, which I propose we take from our fund balance as well. That's sixty thousand dollar revenue to match the expenditure. And the third item under the budget amendment is a three hundred thousand dollar increase in the exit services line for water and sewer. And that's the result of a D Q grant of three hundred thousand dollars that we are recipient of to do a lead copper analysis, an assessment of our water distribution system, identifying where we might have problem areas and, and proposing solutions. So, it's, again, it's another planning effort. It's not the actual money to go and fix things, but it's to identify where the problems may be and and develop a way to, to address them moving forward. That's a three hundred thousand dollar revenue as a, as a grant acceptance. And as I recall, the last me and you voted on, on the both of the grants, we just now need to amend the ordinance, the budget ordinance, so we could tell them, say, yes, we'll take your money. Thank you very much. One question, when, when you have, you spent that money, how long would it take to do the study? I don't know what the deadline is on spending it. It's not, I mean, it's not six months early. We'll have a, a year or two to, to do this. We will have to develop a request for qualifications, go out and seek engineering consulting firms to, to give us proposals or give us our list of qualifications. Develop the scoring mechanism, pick the most qualified firm, then negotiate the, the way, the cost of the project, and then engage them to do the project because of the, to go through that process. So, that will take a little bit of time. We should hopefully have somebody on board this winter, when, so when they can start working on it.
Well, I do have one question. So, with the grant, I'm, I don't think this, you know, this isn't a question on anything. I'm just wondering, so what happens once we find out what's wrong with our system? Are there grants out there to maybe support the repairs and?
Uh, there could be. You know, there's, there's always the opportunity to apply for water quality money from the state. Obviously, the federal government periodically has grant opportunities for different types of funding. Whether we know what the problems are or not, we're still obligated to address them. So, this, this is a step we have to take to identify them in order to address them. And we will certainly be diligent pursuing grant opportunities. And probably funding, if there are, if there are discrete spots that we can afford to do on our own, you know, we would certainly start with those and save the grant opportunity for, if there's a major improvement that needs to be made. So, we would, we would probably structure it that way, so that we can hopefully utilize as much grant funds down the road as possible. But, you know, it could be two, three, four, five years before those come about. We would need to be able to show progress in the interim. See a bunch of small projects moving forward.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to? Second? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Letter C, resolution to support the treaty on the prohibition of nuclear.
Here, I propose that the council table with title, item indefinitely, until we have established an adopted policy for handling agenda items of.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
The second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Great, moving on to old business, acceptance of NCDOT multimodal transportation grant. This is the one that we discussed.
Right, we talked about it a couple of weeks ago, and it didn't have the budget resolution, so we, and I apologize, I recollect, my recollection was we had endorsed it, but we hadn't yet, so we're bringing it up, we endorse now. So we adopted the resolution endorsing the application, this is a motion, we actually accept the money from this thing.
And this is on our old business that you want us to take? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion there, we accept.
And a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion carries. Right, we have some new business, major development plan review for the East Neighborhood Commons Residence Hall. And I believe our town planner Lori is gonna come and give us that presentation.
Good evening, mayor members of the board. So the petition that you have in front of you this evening is petition MDP, twenty-two, oh-two, it's a request by Brad Moore on behalf of Elon University for a major development plan for residence hall, locate the intersection of East Haggard Avenue and North Oak Avenue. So currently, we have an area on the screen for you, so currently, the parcel contains three existing residence halls. And we're working on getting a pointer, laser pointer that will work, but you can kind of see all to the aqua circle. You can see the existing residence halls that are on the parcel already. And there's also a parking lot just south over the road, street right away, that's actually part of the parcel as well. And where the circle is drawn, you can see there's an existing parking lot that is proposed to be removed. So to the west of the site is existing Elon University property, there are several buildings, they're all zoned public institutional. Immediately to the south, you have single-family dwellings and a vacant parcel that is zoned suburban residential. To the east, you have more single-family dwellings that are split between suburban residential zoning and neighborhood residential. And to the north is a vacant parcel that's owned by the university, I believe it was previously a school, zoned public institutional, and then kind of northeast is an apartment building that's zoned urban residential. You go next, so that is the, correct? That is the zoning map that I kind of just went over, so you can see it's kind of surrounded for the most part by the public institutional with a little bit of residential to the southeast and northeast. So included in your submitter were several site plans. This one was kind of toward the front of your packet, and it shows a larger area of the parcel. So you can see the relationship of the proposed residence hall along with the existing buildings on the site. And you can see the residence hall is kind of in that top right corner of the parcel. And then you can see the connectivity to the existing buildings already on the parcel. Next. So this was the next site plan in your packet, which is kind of blown up of the proposed building. And it also contained all the relevant information as it relates to this specific project. So the proposed residence hall will contain fifty-two residential uses. Black space, kind of entertaining space, particularly out in that front area toward Haggard, we call the forum. It'll have study rooms, living room lounges, storage space, and then also an office. A new parking lot is proposed, located off of North Oak, and it contains four parking spaces, it's kind of that shaded area in the southeast area of the project. An eight-foot wide sidewalk runs along the western portion of the project, so it's that dark area off to the left. And it also includes pervious pavement area, which consists of honeycomb-shaped pavers. So that will provide access for emergency vehicles. So the darker area is actually the paved area, and then the lighter shading is those honeycomb pavers, so the emergency vehicles can get out there if needed. There's also existing sidewalks along both Haggard and along North Oak Street. There's also sidewalks planned around the perimeter of the building and a proposed mid-block crossing, which you can kind of see just north of those honeycomb pavers that I just talked about. Next. So the ordinance requires that they submit front elevations. We actually asked for all four elevations of the building, so we could better understand the relationship of the building with the surrounding uses, particularly the single family. So the proposed building is three stories tall. There is a basement that will be visible on certain elevations, which you can kind of see in some of those renderings. However, the LDO measures building height along the building frontage along Haggard, from the highest elevation of the grade up to the east. So while it looks like a portion of it might be four stories, the way the LDO measures building height is a three-story building. The top elevation on the screen in front of you is the front of the building, that's the view from East Haggard. The middle elevation is from the west, so that's from those existing residence halls that are on the parcel. And then the bottom elevation is from the east side, where the new parking lot's being proposed along North Oak Street. Next. And the final elevation is from the south or of the rear of the building. Next. So on this screen is the landscaping plan that was included in your packet. There is a fifteen-foot wide proposed landscaping buffer along the rear of the property adjacent to two single-family uses. The landscaping plan does comply with LDO requirements. Next. So parking requirements for university uses, the minimum parking requirement is one space for every two students and one space for every one employee or university staff. So initially, when I looked at the plan, I was like, well, we have a parking reduction because you have an existing parking lot that's being removed, until the university provided me with all their calculations. And they actually exceed the parking requirements for the university by over a thousand spaces. So even by removing the existing parking lot and only adding four, they still have an excess one thousand and seventy-five parking spaces, so they do meet the parking requirements for the LDO. Next. The Envision Elon twenty forty comprehensive land use plan identifies the site as institutional, which of course includes the university and other campus-style developments. Next. The proposed residence hall and the associated site improvements meet some of the recommendations contained in the Haggard Avenue corridor plan from phase one, which includes the mid-block crossing, which I had already talked about, along with the proposed street treaties. The technical review committee did review this plan at both our August tenth and August twenty-fourth meeting. There was a lot of discussion from the fire department, making sure that we had sufficient emergency vehicular access to all sides of the building. And all of the items mentioned during the TRC meetings were addressed by the applicant and his engineering team. Next. Staff recommends approval of the proposed major development plan as it meets the requirements outlined in the LDO. The plan also meets the future land use classification description outlined in the Envision Elon twenty forty comprehensive plan, and also recommendations that are contained in the Haggard Avenue corridor plan in phase one. Next. And lastly, the planning board reviewed this case at their September twentieth meeting and voted unanimously seven to zero to recommend approval of the project. If you have any questions for me at this time, I'd be happy to answer them. Also, Brad with Elon University is here as well, if you have questions for the applicant.
I have a question, when we were talking about the East Haggard project station, there was discussion about changing that intersection to be more perpendicular Oak Avenue into Haggard Avenue, that's a sharp turn there. I don't know if that's something that would impact it if we did do that later on as part of the East Haggard.
Can you go back to the site? Say it at the end, but we can go back. Nope, the next one.
About one more?
Go forward now.
Okay.
So I think you've got room, if I'm not mistaken, Brad, there's landscaping in that corner. I don't know how the utilities are, I think that's where we're changing right now on the north side of Haggard, if I remember correctly.
The other thing that was pointed out in that East Haggard study was just the limitations for ADA access of that sidewalk. Clearly, you have a narrow sidewalk that wasn't designed for wheelchair access, but there's a utility pole right in the middle of it. So I don't know if that's something that could be incorporated to make that more pedestrian-friendly. Because as it is now, it's, it's a danger, I see people have to, if they're crossing, somebody gets out in the road. I don't know if that's an opportunity to take advantage of redoing the sidewalk the way it should have been done to code.
Is that along Haggard?
It's along Haggard, right in front of that.
I'm trying to think, we don't have sidewalk improvements planned in that area, we're just doing water lines right now. Does it impact the sidewalk or?
I, I mean, I suspect we're gonna be in the pavement as opposed to often the side, so. Although it's still being designed, so I haven't seen it. Yeah, those, there's, there's observations I had about concerns about you're gonna build a nice building, but then you got a a passageway that's not up to standard or code. And if that intersection were something that we were going to address, because I do remember a few mentions of that, there was discussion about changing that, so it's more perpendicular instead of that seventy-five degree angle.
So does the, the plan, I know exactly what you're talking about, but does it level out Haggard, or did it have Oak making a turn prior?
You'd have to go back to some of our previous meetings, but we showed it as going back, if you're going north, it's gonna veer back to the left a little bit, so the stoplight essentially we moved west, I mean, forty, fifty feet. That's nothing, that's not, we have planned, we're thinking something that is part of that project.
No, I think that's a good point, and Brad, just probably something for you all to think about that if we are, at some point, if we were to change that road a little bit, you know, to the west, how it may impact your design, just thinking about that as you're doing it, so that it's not too much of, you know, an issue and when it does get done.
How many spaces was that?
Roughly forty-five.
Forty-five, and who was?
It's some of the residents that are in the existing residence halls, we call A, B, and C. We built a large parking lot across the street a year or so ago, and so those forty-five students will just migrate to the north of this site.
Has there been any pushback from homeowners just south of there? I mean, I believe that we're just sold.
So major development plans do not require a public hearing, they require a public meeting, which is a bit unusual. However, to make sure that the adjacents were aware of the project, I went ahead and mailed adjoining property owner letters to notify them of this meeting. And then I also went out and posted the site to make people aware. And I did receive one phone call, but it was from the north side of the project, and he just wanted to review the plans to see what was being proposed. But I have not heard from the, you can run it immediately, they said, to the south.
I mean, they're here. Those are all rental properties, is there anyone here who owns those properties?
Two houses there are not rentals. On the corner of Oak and.
Oh, that's right.
They came to one of our meetings.
I was thinking just across the street from there.
There's two houses there, back up to that, and that's why I was wondering if they were notified about.
I did notify them, the letters went out two weeks ago and.
For university, so.
Yes, you're right.
I have, and I take that back, I did have one other phone call now, but I think about it early on from the gentleman whose mother owns the property at the corner of Haggard on that southeast quadrant, and he just wanted to know what was proposed, and I told him, okay, more of the resident halls, but he didn't have any opposition or even want to see the plan.
What timeline do we have proposed for this, far as construction start, I mean, obviously.
So currently, we're running to break ground, being first next year in fourteen months.
What would that bring your total bed count to?
I should have that number, I don't have it in my head, we're somewhere around four thousand beds on campus, and so this will be another ninety or so beds added to campus.
And all of those occupied?
They are.
What water line are they gonna tie into, will it be in the Haggard?
This will be happening while we're doing the replacement line? So I think you're tying into the new line on Haggard on the number. Same as existing properties on the west of that, right?
I think they do, but I think they also connect to the one on College Street and sort of create a loop.
And that was brought up during our TRC meeting, if I recall correctly, Josh, our engineer, talked about.
And also, I think I'm gonna do a video outside dumpster, so that will be all internal things up and.
So it would be between the current mid-block crossing and the crossing at the intersection. Do we feel that that's really necessary?
About the one on Haggard? Yeah, that's right there near that driveway that seems, the old driveway and.
I mean, that's just really close to have an additional parcel, we've been talking a lot.
Because you have one to the west of that, it's probably another.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, is, is that one necessary when you have one at the intersection?
Well, that's where they're parking, they've got to park, they gotta cross the street, so it's logical to put it there.
Oh, yeah. I mean, the other one should just, what?
Go work out.
There's already one there.
That's why I said there's one there.
I guess. We've just had a lot of conversation about mid-block crossings that we weren't supportive of, and now we're saying that we are. So I'm just asking.
Lord is feeling it down to twenty.
Okay. That's my only question. Are we taking action on this, this meeting?
Um, no, I was presenting, assuming that action would be at the next meeting.
We'll move that item to our next agenda.
One quick question, I assume Chief Massey, you feel comfortable with this, of being able to get to it and handling what we gotta do?
We had it all, any concerns, we had.
And they did reconfigure the parking lot, if I remember correctly, to make sure that also your vehicle could get in and make that turn north oak along with the honeycombed and access from the western.
Bike lane along Oak Avenue. Not mistaken.
I don't know if it's technically a bike lane, but there's like a yeah, a wide shoulder.
We were talking about that greenway that comes in.
Hey, any other? All right, thanks Lori, we can move back to the next agenda. Well, it says to report, so town manager.
This coming Friday, the fourteenth, is our last music denying tune of the season. Featured artist is Love and Valor, we'll start playing under the tent at six P M. The LMO committee regarding our land use codes. Tomorrow evening, five. Tomorrow evening, five thirty, as we're working on the land use code. There is a Zoom link if people are interested in attending either in person or via Zoom, and that's available on our website. We signed agreements with Benchmark to work on our next downtown plan. And they are meeting next Thursday morning, one is at eight thirty, downtown. Start kicking off that process. And next Tuesday is planning board meeting on the eighteenth. And I brought you our our town calendar under the community tab on our website for all those upcoming events, additional information. There are two meetings that are coming up relatively quickly that you might be interested in attending, the board members. Chamber is holding its twenty twenty-three economic summit is coming Thursday, runs from four until six thirty. Be held, being hosted by Elon University, so it's a short drive for us. And next Thursday. The date's wrong. Next Thursday, October the twentieth. The chamber meeting might be on Wednesday. I'll double check that. On October the twentieth is the City County Association Dinner. It's being held in Hall River. And if any of you are interested in attending either of those, please get in touch with Diane and she will. Two weeks ago, we finished up our neighborhood meetings. The summary of of comments has been distributed and looking for any feedback from anybody on issues that may have been overlooked or suggested solutions. I've given staff members until the twenty-first to get their comments back to me. What's, we'll be putting the most of comments up on our website, and then we'll, once the comments are responded to, we'll finish that document as well. So it'll be in the next couple of weeks, you'll see those. And lastly, I know, well, she is still here. I want to say congratulations to Chief Blackmilder, who this past week received her diploma for master's degree in law enforcement from San Diego State. University of San Diego. She's been doing an online course for the last two years. And she 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 finished and she got her diploma and she's waiting to march. Probably around her her bedroom when the. But.
Go to San Diego. You just gotta go out there.
So she's been doing that in the evening after she's been working all day, so congratulations.
All righty. We will start with.
Well, I just want to thank our wonderful fire department, police department, and especially our public works department. For the amazing job that they did after the hurricane came through. We were very lucky and very blessed that we didn't have more damage, but tree went down in our neighborhood. I got called and immediately before I could even get out the door to see it, it was moved. And the public works department, and I know the fire department and the police department were out there immediately for safety precautions. But our public works department has worked tirelessly getting everything cleaned up, trying to get it back to normal. And additionally, if you look downtown, their handiwork can be seen as well along the windows. The wonderful backdrop that I've seen so many visitors and students and families. You know, I thought for sure that pillow wouldn't disappear, but it's not. It's still there, so we have a wonderfully safe. The gnomes, well, you know, gnomes, what are you gonna do with them? So anyway, many thanks always to all our departments, but especially to those during this this tough time. It could have been a lot worse, but we know that you guys can do it when the things get tough. So thank you all so much.
Thank you, Randy.
Congratulations, chief, and I'm gonna ask you a quick question if it's possible. We heard at that last sharing time about a program that you were all doing to help inform students about walking in the crosswalks. Have you been able to tap into that? Did that, because I know that rainy weekend, we weren't able to do it, and I didn't know if you did it any subsequent weekends.
Yes, sir. We had it planned for September thirtieth. We got rained out, but Lieutenant King put it back into effect last week, and I think it was Haggard and O'Kelly, and it was successful. They had some really good conversations. And also use that time to I think be educational for drivers as well that were kind of aggressively driving through there. So it was, it was, it was pretty successful, and we're gonna continue to have those every couple of weeks. We're gonna be out on foot, just educating for a while, and then hopefully we won't have to have any.
It was just such a new way of thinking when we heard it, that the student has their first foot in the crosswalk, that's when we have to stop, but you don't have to if they're not. And that has not been at least a practice that I've seen, or we usually stop when we see them ten feet away from the from the road. So I don't know how that's gonna all play out, but I just thank you for that, knowing that that's at least started, and thank you for informing us too. I think that's really helpful.
Your officers have spent the last four or five months doing webinars and training so that they could implement the program correctly. So it's been a labor of love over the last last while. Actually, we wanted to incorporate this several years ago, but COVID, we we opted not to, so thank you.
I'll just have one more quick one, and that is our our church with the help of Jill and some others are we're hosting a a trunk or treat event in our in our church parking lot, and it's open to the whole community, and it's been from four to six on October thirtieth. That's all I have.
A Saturday?
Sunday.
That's a Sunday, October thirtieth.
Not much. Congratulations, Chief Blackmilder. That's awesome, like rock star. Good stuff. Police Department, that's that's great. I work in insurance, so it does, right? They always ask the class codes, so I think that is. People want to come to our town and also for our I look forward to all the October festivities for the for the kiddos. I'm gonna really try to make this last music to dine to. Had other plans, but I don't think I can miss that. Love and Valor is always a hit, and they bring a good crowd, so you should definitely check them out. Other than that, that is it.
Well, not to reiterate, but but congratulations to the chief on your decree and for class two for fire department, the information. We appreciate all the work you do. Also, I want to give a shout out. A citizen reported a water line, appeared like a water line, because there was water running well after Ian. And they were able to find it and locate, I think, in ballpark. I think it was, but it was a significant amount of water that we were paying for that we didn't get the benefit of. So I just I encourage people, if you see something that doesn't look normal.
Turned out it was a catch basin on top of the water line, and as a catch basin sunk, water line didn't necessarily break, but it was leaking pretty good right into the into the culvert, and so it just downstreamed. Just like, hey, the stream's running, wasn't coming to the surface, so it would have been hard to visually see. So yes.
And the other thing I was gonna mention, and I know it was a late notice, but the the new signage from Sam Cousins. I'll I'll tell you this story. When I was in elementary school, he was my crossing guard, and he always had a heart for children. He's always friendly. You know, it didn't matter who you were. He he was always out there protecting, looking for for the interest of children. I hate we didn't know about this. It would have been nice if we could have done it. I think we gotta do a better job. We just gotta do a better job of trying to find out if we made a sign. We got to, we got to let somebody know that we're gonna install it and what's gonna happen as far as recognizing it. But it was a missed opportunity for at least one of us.
It was, and it was. It was, it was a fun, it was an event today that was scheduled not by us. And we didn't, like I said, we didn't even, Donnie was on vacation. He didn't even know about it. I told him this morning.
That's where we seem connected, like we get our community meetings, churches and the organizations that are out there, just letting us know so we can be aware. But he was, he was a great man and great asset to ballpark, one community and well deserved.
He was on, as I say, he was on the board for for, I'm not sure how long, several terms at least. And was part of the effort to bring sewer water to that whole neighborhood. Prior to that, it was outhouses and wells, I assume, but so he was, he was very instrumental in in making improvements to to that whole neighborhood.
I'll repeat, congratulations. The fire department, that's a, that's quite an honor, five percent in the country. That's pretty, pretty awesome. So it'll help our insurance potentially. So I guess at some point, we need to let our citizens know that. I know now is probably not the time. Anyway, that's great.
We we had, they've known for a while, but we we haven't said anything till we reported it to you. So yes, that will be, that will be going out over this last quarter. Make sure, doing our best, make sure people are aware of it.
Chief Blackboulder, congratulations to you. Are working all hard all day and then at night, so kudos to you for that. And just reminder, I'm not gonna be here.
I do have my phone out, not because I'm sending a message, but I wanted to share some of the events that are coming up in town. In addition to those that have been mentioned. So this Saturday morning is the Cars and Coffee Event at Elon Community Church. I'm sorry, downtown, I'm based that and put that, puts that event on. And we have the Halloween happenings on Friday, the twenty eighth. I know we're meeting before that, but again, we want to keep everything on everyone's calendar. Early, so that is from two to seven P M. At the church, so earlier in the day. At the park, sorry. Yes, at the park, and then the church is Sunday. And if you would like to go ahead and add.
Beth Smith Park, right?
Yes, Beth Smith. And some additional events we have on Friday, December the second. Will be the tree lighting at Beth Smith Park. And on Saturday, the third, we will do the tree lighting downtown. And on Sunday, the eighteenth, we will have a downtown Hanukkah celebration. So please go ahead and add those events to your calendar. As we're excited to have those. I wanted to share, I had saw a post on Facebook regarding a scam of a local resident. They never even heard anyone on their front porch, but when they went outside, there was a door hanger that, and the chief can talk about it probably a little bit more in detail, because I just took a screenshot of the Facebook post and told them to call the police. And send it to Kelly, but essentially it was like a mortgage fraud situation, and they were saying that your mortgage is overdue. You're gonna be evicted, and they gave information on who to contact, and I'm sure that they're targeting, you know, and certain groups of people. Probably the elderly that are more likely to, you know, fall for something like that. So please just be mindful and just watch for, you know, just anything strange in your neighborhood. You know, there are certainly legitimate people who might be coming up onto your front porch and ringing your doorbell for certain reasons or to sell something or get you to donate or it's election season as well. But just, just be mindful, but also I recently heard about someone who is campaigning on behalf of someone in our town, and the person was told some very terrible things about what could happen to them for ringing the doorbells. And I just think that that's not what we're about here in the town of Elon. Like, if someone rings your doorbell, that doesn't give you the right to threaten them. No matter who they're there campaigning for or what that person may look like. And so just don't assume that people in your neighborhood are there with foreign intentions. That they're probably there for all the right reasons, but know that maybe they're not. Nine times out of ten, they're gonna be the people that should be there. And I was gonna mention the new sign, so thanks, Monty, for doing that. Also, I did ask for Rich to consider making our retreat in November an all-day retreat. I know that that's very hard on all of us, because we do work, but I do think that we have some really important things that we need to discuss. And we need to discuss our board policy in addition to the budget items that were already planned on that agenda. So I know our town attorney is stressing to me every time I speak with him, and Diane is stressing to me every time I talk to her that this has got to be the priority. So I'm hoping that everyone can make the effort to attend all day so that we can work on that together in addition to the items that were already planned. Okay. Do I have a a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Being adjourned. Thank you very much.
Let's all, the public ass.